If you would all rise please. At this time I'll ask Commissioner Burles if they will have our prayer, our invocation and pledge to the flag.
To help with the problem that we come for you today, grateful for the opportunity to serve the people of Green County. May I put your guidance and wisdom and discuss issues that affect our communities? Blessed are dedicated public service employees and volunteers who work hard to make this county a better place for all. Killing streets, passing the summer as they carry out their duty. Help us to listen to each other with open hearts and minds, remind us that though we may not always agree, we share a common goal to do what is best for this county. Let the spirit of community and selfless service guide our discussion. Lead us to solutions that relieve of all those in need and ensure that all people of Green County call Green County home to kneel down. I pray these things in your holy name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Thank you, sir.
Stand your body.
It's that time of year, gentlemen, where we elect the chair and the vice chair. So I'll start off with nominations for the chairman.
We will nominate Commissioner Heath as the chairman.
Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you.
Move to close nomination.
Okay. All in favor of re-electing Chairman Heath, Chairman, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Chairman?
At this time I'll call for the nomination for the election of vice chair.
Nominate Mr. James Shackleton for vice chair.
Have a nomination for Commissioner Shackleton for vice chair, is there another nomination? Here now. Have a second for Commissioner Shackleton for vice chair. Here are no other nominations, I will call the vote. Those in favor of Commissioner Shackleton as vice chairman signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried unanimously. For the commissioners, you have your proposed agenda for today's meeting, is there any change to the proposed agenda?
See no change, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda for today's meeting.
Have a motion for approval of today's agenda, is there a second?
Settle.
Have a motion and a second, need a further discussion. Here are none of those in favor the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried unanimously. You have also in your packet the proposed consent agenda for today's meeting, is there any change to the proposed consent agenda?
Here are no changes, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda for today's meeting.
Have a motion to approve the consent agenda, do I have a second?
Settle.
Have a motion and a second, need a further discussion. Here are none of those in favor the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried unanimously. We have no one for public comments, our first presenter today, Mr. Trevor Creach.
How are y'all doing this morning?
Good morning.
I appreciate y'all giving me a couple of minutes to talk with y'all about this pipeline easement. I know I talked to y'all a little bit about it previously, but essentially my company, Carolina Land Acquisitions, we're a land acquisition company, we usually work with the DOT on eminent domain road projects, but we've been hired by this Monarch Bioenergy to complete their pipeline project, which is essentially where they're looking to take pig waste and turn it into renewable energy. It's going through Pitt County, Green County, there's a lot of hog farms in the area. And this property that Green County owns at 105 Lanfield Road is going through their proposed pipeline area. I know y'all are kind of building some new stuff out there, but essentially what they're trying to do is run this pipeline across the frontage, which is Fire Tower Road. And it's a 20-foot wide easement and it's right outside the rideaway. So that's the area they're looking to install the pipeline, it's a very small pipeline, it's a four inches in diameter and it would be about four feet into the ground. And it just runs this pipeline, it's a very large pipeline, it runs through Pitt County, through Green County. And they're just trying to, you know, use all this pig waste and make it into renewable energy more efficient and just be better for the environment in general. I know y'all had some questions about it and I can answer those to the best of my ability if y'all have anything that...
Well, just gas, I'm assuming it's the gas that's emitted from the pig waste.
Yes, methane gas, yes, sir.
Methane gas.
Yep.
Is that gonna be tied into the natural gas line that's already there?
No, this is a new line that's gonna be going in, it's like I said, it's a four foot or four inches in diameter pipeline. None of it's installed yet, they're trying to make sure enough people are on board with it before they can actually do it so they have the right routes. If like if one person can't do it, then they could just, you know, that's the whole thing. But that's why they're doing it in a way where they're signing option agreements, where you get 20% of the money upfront and then the other 80%, if they were to exercise the option, they would have three years to do this. So they're trying to get enough people on board to make sure they would do it and they have essentially three years to decide whether or not they want to do it.
Oh, question, what, now this waste, what level of process before you get into these pipes?
Yeah, so they're on the parcels with actual hog farms, they're putting what's called digesters, which that just breaks down all the waste and then that waste goes into these pipelines. The people from Monarch Bioenergy are dealing with those people individually. We're just dealing with the parcels that just have the pipeline going under it. So they would have more information on how the waste is actually broken down. I don't know exactly how that would be, but they do a lot of these projects all throughout the country and I'm sure they have their process on exactly how they do that.
Oh, will it eliminate some of this pumping that you see over here in the fields?
Some of the piping?
The pumping.
Oh, the pumping?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're saying it'll eliminate some of that and it'll eliminate a lot of these trucks that are going around. That is, I have a little bit of information on that.
We want to take the solid and spread it out on the land for fertilizer, you talking about that?
Yeah.
Before they pump them out and clear them out.
Yeah, so it's supposed to make everything more efficient and less traffic in there with the waste and all things like that.
Okay. Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead.
All right, the methane gas, where is that gonna be going? Is that gonna be contained in a large facility somewhere and then distributed out?
Um, not exactly sure where the gas would end up going, it's just renewable energy. I could ask that question, I just have a couple of F H Qs that they've asked us to, um, you know, I don't know exactly every detail on where the gas would go. I'll see if they say exactly where it would be on this. I don't exactly know the location. I'm just a middleman and I'm not the guy, I'm not the man on the plane, I'm just out here trying to sell people on it essentially.
But if we give this easement or whatever, it's done deal, y'all can...
They have the option to, yeah, for three years.
This is just an option?
Yeah.
Okay.
So there's no guarantee they'll actually do it, but it's a...
Try to get your ducts in a rug first.
Yeah, they gotta make sure enough people will be willing to do it. Now, we've had a lot of positive feedback from a lot of property owners out there, so it's looking pretty good so far.
I do have one question of interest and I support the concept. Where is this related to our landfill?
It's the property that runs it, up Fire Tower Road, adjacent to our landfill.
Say more, which way is it going, which way is this line going?
I got a map right here if you want.
It follows Fire Tower Road.
I looked at the map, I looked at the map this morning because I asked for it, it was a map of gas line that could be the front of this way.
Yeah.
And but when I understand, it wasn't front, like it's gonna be like this right here.
The way that I understand this pipe is, what, 20 feet off the road, way four feet in the ground, four-inch pipe?
Yeah, the easement is 20-foot wide, but the pipe is four inches in diameter and you should be able to do anything above the ground that you're already doing.
And it runs on Fire Tower Road, correct?
Yeah, so this is a map of it, if you wanna take a look, the purple...
I sure do.
The purple is the actual proposed area in which the pipeline's gonna be running through, it's on that Fire Tower Road and that's the, that 105 Lanfield Drive is the location right there.
So question then, uh, north and south. How far south does it go from our landfill?
It's going through Pitt and Green County, I don't know, I don't have the whole map of everything, but it's a very wide range.
The purple lines for the gas line.
There's a green one there, that's where it is.
Okay, I'm gonna cut right to the chase and ask then, tell you why I'm asking this question. Going towards the south from the, uh, public works land, the Green County land, there's a paved parking lot for a church. So are you proposing going under that?
The next parcel?
Are you proposing going under that parking lot?
I'd have to see the maps of that one, I don't have that claim.
And across the street, across the road from that paved parking lot, there's a cemetery.
They wouldn't get through the cemetery, so they wouldn't, they've marked out things like that. And it's also, it's your choice to do it, if they say no, then they just can't run through those areas. They'll try to find another route.
I'm very concerned about the parking lot and the cemetery across from the parking lot because they do, they are adjacent to one another.
And they're willing to reroute it a little bit as well if there was...
I don't want to cause any problems for the project, but I'm concerned about the fact that there is a paved, a paved parking lot that I don't know that...
Is Green County on that parcel?
No, sir, Green County doesn't own it, the church does.
So they would, it would be the church's decision, and I don't...
So you wanna ask the church if you can go under that parking lot?
I'm not, but whoever has that claim will, if there is one running through that claim. And they're also rerouting some lines as well to some property owners where they don't want it in their field, they'd rather it be in the woods, so they can work with you as...
Working with us is fine, I just raise that as a concern.
Yeah.
And I'm very well aware that there is a paved parking lot there at the church and very well aware of the cemetery across the parking lot. And 20 feet, 20 feet doesn't do anything, I mean, they're both under a paved parking lot or in a cemetery.
It's my understanding that the company would be boring.
Yes, they will, they will be boring, yes.
How many feet, I mean, that long distance?
They said 2,000 feet, they just need like a 50 by 50-foot area.
Just concerned about the parking lot, that's all?
Yes.
And obviously you're not gonna disturb a cemetery, obviously.
No, and they'll reroute it as well as they can. And that'll just be between the church and the, and our company. Like I said, I don't have that one, I don't know if they can go through that parcel, but it will obviously be their choice if they want to do it or not.
Okay.
Or not, it's not even...
What they done made is...
Under the road that goes into our landfill, is that the road you're talking about moving in?
It can go under the landfill road, then it'll go under the parking lot. And doesn't it run right up on Fire Tower Road, along Fire Tower?
It's showing both, it's showing going north and south from our landfill property.
Property.
Yeah, so it's right outside the rideaway, this easement area, so there shouldn't be any interference with any underground utilities, anything in that nature as well.
So the decision's yours based on the information Mr. Creach has provided?
I move to approve him.
Okay. Have a motion and a second to approve, need a further discussion. All those in favor the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Have one nay. Motion carries. All in favor, one opposed.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
One reason, you know, we do have a lot of hog farms in there.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. And in the future, we're gonna have some issue with this, with this stuff, with the hog...
The waste.
The waste.
Yeah.
And because...
Not that it's a problem, just, I don't, I don't, I'm not against this project, all right? But I kinda feel like he came to us and didn't give us a lot of information, a lot of unanswered questions. I can't vote and I have all these questions.
Okay. I respect that.
Okay. This is not installed either, just a request.
Mr. Moore?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. And what I've got for you is on our supervisor, control and data acquisition project that, you know, just replaced all of our, you know, electrical control system for our water system. All the facilities have been installed, our facilities are operational and, you know, what we're doing is moving forward with the closeout of the project. And in support of closeout, we've gotta do a final adjusting change order that just basically finalizes the quantities based on what was installed. You know, we had, you know, some changes in construction that dealt with acknowledgement of the path study that was required in terms of dealing with leaving some of the antennas where they were, repurpose some of the antennas to allow us to, you know, put in some additional switches and, um, and to gather data. And we had to replace three of the radios at some of the existing well sites, just that they were outdated. And we wanted to also acknowledge that one of the components that we were trying to do with this was be able to read the data from Greengill and Farnwell, whereas our current contract is that Farnwell kinda gets the data and shares it, but we wanted to make sure that, you know, this system interface with that, you know, Farnwell control so that we could read exactly what they were reading. And through that process, in the past, there was a, an internet service that was provided at the site that it was mutually agreed on how to pay for it and everything else. And in going through construction, we've acknowledged that Farnwell has abandoned the internet and has put in a cellphone, and that's how they're transitioning data. So we've modified the, you know, the programming with a switch device that allows Green County to read the data, but it did require that we install a splitter at the Farnwell facility. So we felt that was appropriate and it was needed so that we had access to that data, same data that they're having access from, from Greengill. And felt like that was, you know, that was in our best interest to make sure that we were getting the same data they were, for lack of a better word. So, you know, end result is that the construction costs went up by, you know, $1,136.63 and that resulted in some slight changes in the overall budget ordinance. No changes, not just moving money around, for lack of a better word, in the budget to deal with the closeout. So there is no additional compensation or, you know, required from the county. One component of the, of the contract was to provide spare parts for, you know, the control system. And when we initially got the approval from the state, they acknowledged that the spare parts cost would be a cost of the county. And so in the budget, there's $2,900 of local contribution that's currently identified to pay for those spare parts. We're gonna process the final requisition and request that the state pay for those $2,900 and we believe that they're gonna pay it. So I fully acknowledge that even though I've got a budget amendment here to accommodate the change order, I'm gonna have to come back to you at another board meeting and amend the budget again to finalize it. And at that time I'll have final sales tax numbers and everything else, just gotta shore it up. I will also bring back a contract amendment between Farnwell and Green County to acknowledge the installation of the splitter box that allows us to read the cellphone device that will require an amendment to the operational agreement between the county and the town. Don't have that for you today, but I will have that at a future board meeting. So what I'm asking is for your consideration to adopt the resolution to amend the project budget ordinance and approve the final adjusting change order, which is change order number three. So be glad to answer any questions.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion to approve, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second, need a further discussion. Here are none of those in favor the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried unanimously.
Much obliged.
Thank you for all you do.
Oh, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
What happened to the lights that ran across?
On tape?
Yeah, on tape.
Oh, they on that again?
I've been by several times, I've been by.
I will find out. Yeah, 'cause yes, there's, we're paying for those things to work. You are correct. I'll find out. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Sir.
Mr. Edwards?
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
How y'all doing?
Good to see you.
I think last time I was before you, I was with Ms. Stroud, as a matter of fact. We were talking about healthcare at that time.
Yes, sir.
And it seems to be an issue that I am, I feel very passionate about. Especially the longer I live, the more I wanna live and I want a better life and I'm pretty sure we all want that. And there are some changes that are happening to our healthcare system here in Green County as a result of a proposed merger. Initially, and that merger would be between East Point, Sand Hills and Trillium. When the first announcement came out, we were of the opinion that Trillium was gonna be the surviving MCO. However, since that, since the initial letter by the secretary, there has been some clarification. Now it seems as though it's gonna be reduced to at least five, at no more than five, but they wanna get to four. So there's an opportunity really for East Point to be a surviving entity. Am I advocating for East Point or am I advocating for Trillium? Well, I'm a Green Countyan and East Point, who was formerly known as the Beacon Center, the surviving entity. And many of you, in fact, we have two commissioners that I know, that I'm looking at right now, that sits on the board of East Point and they probably are more aware and know more information than I do. But I do know that the provider association, we're very concerned about this because there has been a lot of stress on the provider network over the past three years, especially with COVID, especially with the consolidation of Alliance, which was in the greater Charlotte area, not Alliance, Cardinal, in the Charlotte area, which led to the elimination of another managed care entity. And the legislature has seen fit that we're spending too much money, I believe, on administrative costs by having all of these MCOs, so they do want to have some consolidation. Consolidation has benefited. But really what I wanted to point out, I think there's a lot of difference between Dare County and Green County. I think there's a lot of difference between Dare County, Green County and Guilford County. So we're gonna have a conglomeration of different counties who may be administering care and we don't wanna forget the cultural sensitivity of each area, each area is different. So I'm just calling, I'm not asking you to vote on anything, I'm just calling to your attention so that, you know, as far as informing our constituencies of the potential for those changes because there are many people who get Medicare that also receives Medicaid, so they may be impacted too. They may have to change their doctors. We don't know all of the implication, but what we're doing, we're just calling it to your attention so that when the citizens ask that you can give a response. And then most of all, don't forget that we expanded Medicaid on the December the 1st. That's gonna affect 600,000 potential North Carolinians. We're also having a problem reaching these individuals because since COVID, we're having a problem with employees and we're also having a problem finding the beneficiaries. But, you know, we believe that collectively, together, you know, working with commissioners like you, working with boards, that we can get the work out. If you have any questions, I'm prepared to answer them.
Have you talked to other counties in the Trillium area?
We are beginning that process, in fact, we met with Trillium. I met with Joy and Cindy others over at Trillium about a week or so ago. We had a provider association meeting because that's what we're concerned about. If you think about, we don't have enough providers now and if we add 600,000 new people, that's a big lift. And so we wanna make sure that, you know, we don't lose anybody in the process.
So we are, Trillium, I mean, they want to be one of the lead players, height, I mean, with that, uh, uh, background, what do you think their chances are?
Well, I think that, I don't think it's a level playing field. I think politics, as you know, has a lot to do with who the legislators choose and what deals have already been cut. From my understanding, this has been going on, but sometimes this is probably a two-year-old type situation.
Situation, right from the bottom?
Yes, it has been going, it's been going on for some time. And, you know, I think that eastern North Carolinians know best how to serve other east North Carolinians, eastern North Carolinians. And it's a lot different because I do work over the state and the Charlotte area is a lot different than it is here. And here where you have people that, you know, try to take care of themselves, I think they, I think we live a little longer, I think we take care of our families a little better together. I don't think we put as many people in the nursing homes as they do in some areas, so I think our area is uniquely different. And I think that we just need to be aware of that as we are entertaining these different changes.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you, thank you for your presentation and we appreciate all you do.
Thank you, sir.
Middle Hill business is very, it's a very significant issue.
And we all have it, we realize it or not.
We all have it. You're right.
If you don't believe, ask my wife. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Mr. County Manager?
Thank you, sir. A few short items for action today, our first being an appointment needed for the Board of Adjustments. The position was advertised as has been required by the board. One application has been received. Our planning director, Mr. Brandon Sutton, has requested the appointment of Mr. Salvador Tenoco to the Board of Adjustments to fill this vacancy.
What's the length of this term? Two years? Two years?
Three.
Three. Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion to approve, do I have a second? Have a motion, have a second, need a further discussion. Here are none of those in favor the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you, sir. Next item for action today is a budget amendment for emergency management. There was an initiative set in place by the Board of Commissioners to put road signs up. Our emergency manager, emergency director is the lead player in that initiative. All signs that were ordered have now been delivered, they came in different, at different frequencies. He's in the process of having them all installed and I believe he's in the process of ordering more. That is not what this item for action is, that's informational. But I would ask that a budget amendment be approved for $5,600 to pay for the road signs received to this point in the initial initiative.
Move to approve the budget amendment, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second, need a further discussion.
Ed, um, can we have him come to our next meeting, give a report?
Sure.
Probably we have got in Canada, it needs to...
But we don't discuss that in open session. I would hear.
No.
I will call the question, we have a motion, have a second, need a further discussion. Here are none of those in favor the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you. Next item for action is another budget amendment for the senior center. If you recall, a sinkhole developed in the senior center parking lot and we took the initiative to try and fix the senior center parking lot and we had to try three different times to get it. I believe there is no more that can be dug out to be filled with good filter or sand and that is coming at an additional cost of $60,000 to our budget. I've asked that the budget amendment be approved so that we can pay the contractor for the work he has done for us.
Move to approve the budget amendment for the senior sessions, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, need a further discussion. Here are none of those in favor the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, the ayes have it, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Next item for action is approval of the 24 holiday schedule. As is routine, it follows the state holiday schedule. There's no point in us being open or closed on... There's no point in us being open or closed on different days as we are in our state.
Oh, what a question.
Yes, sir.
Juneteenth holiday, that's going to do that.
The Juneteenth is a floating day of.
Right, it's still in place.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Move to approve the proposed holiday schedule, Mr. Chair.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here are none of those in favor of the motion, signify so by saying aye. Aye aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried.
And if I may, Mr. James T., that will remain a, a floating day of recognition until it becomes an official state holiday, and then it will just be approved annually by you. So, just wanted, just wanted to mention that. Thank you, sir. Next item for action is a resolution proposing the 2024 regular meeting schedule. Not many changes. I did keep the, the 10:00 AM first meeting of the month, 7:00 PM second meeting of the month. The third meeting in June, where we do our end of year budget amendment. I put that at 2:00 rather than 10:00 AM. It had to do with giving staff the appropriate amount of time to review that end of year budget amendment. It is quite complicated, and things are changing every day, and just wanted to give staff the opportunity to have success. I believe there were 23 total meetings in, in the year. Are there questions? Or is there a suggestion for a different time?
This pretty much follows what we did this year?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Move to approve the meeting schedule for next year, Mr. Chair.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second, yeah.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? And I would just simply comment that, you know, these are proposed, this is the proposed schedule. Obviously, if we have some event to occur that we need to have a column, we can have a column.
Absolutely.
If we need to cancel one, we can cancel it.
That's right. I will call the question. Those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye. Aye aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried.
I need to comment further. The state does require us to have a regular meeting schedule, which is what we're establishing. Variations can be made.
Yes.
Thank you. Lastly, it is an informational, it is the 2024 Green County Board Term Expirations. In recent meetings, it was asked that we provide this to you on an annual basis. Mr. Cash has provided this to me to provide to you, so we will be advertising as you have requested and require of us to fill these future vacancies. Hopefully, we can do it before they become vacant. Hopefully, we have applicants. Please encourage your constituents, church, public service organizations, et cetera, to apply and fill these positions. I believe that's everything I have for you, sir.
Okay. Madam County Attorney, do you have any comments at this time?
No comments.
Okay. Commissioner reports recommendations.
I would say, I want to clarify my vote for the Carolina acquisition of the state of Oklahoma, not a pit highway system. But I felt like it was a lot of unanswered questions, and I know exactly what the truth should be about three years. It's kind of, it started to seem obvious to me that the presenter was not familiar with the area, and he sat here talking separately and only got positive feedback. I understand that. But when you are not familiar with the fact, the property right next to this property we're talking about, it kind of puts a doubt in my mind. So I just cannot vote go forward without, you know, more visitors to join.
I think the best way he explained it was somebody else said that piece of property.
When it comes up, I would like to have more.
Were you on the seat?
When it comes up, you know, really have nothing about this, you know, agenda. So the public's not even aware of, you know, and I would like to have more public feedback before we vote on stuff like that.
There's always down the road.
And Derek, I understand what you're saying, and you got a right to have your feeling about it, but the reason that my comment stuck on you was that I do know that we have some issues out here with these, you know, hot bottles of this waste, and it could become more of an issue and a health issue, that this stuff is being pumped out with the orders and all this kind of stuff, so. And I'm sure that before it's over, there'll be a lot of questions that we'll have to get answers for, you know, and probably like that, they don't know all the answers to start with it anyway. They have to work their way through things, and it's, it's just that, it's the way it works. So, but the concept of what, about what they're doing is needed. Because we do have a lot of them in the county, and you have a lot of concern that people have with borders and a lot of this stuff. You know, with that waste and some of the other waste that we're going to have more issues about in the future.
Well, that's true. It is a moratorium on highways, not going to be anymore built right now, but soon.
But even with that, we still got no issue with the waste.
We do. Any other, Commissioner reports recommendations? Here are none, do I have a motion to give in a closed session for the purpose of attorney-client privilege and personnel?
They move, Mr. Chair.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here are none of those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye. Aye aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried. Oh, sorry. The Board of Commissioners, again, this year has graciously decided to purchase five bikes for the Department of Social Services, give to five children that need a bike for Christmas, so ship and stay with Merry Christmas to our kids.
Man, I want to see you ride that camera bike out of here.